We will convene the meeting and could we all stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, members of the public are invited to address the authority regarding items that is not listed on the agenda. We do have a speaker card right now. Ryan? 1.3. Ryan, you can sit back down. Well, we'll get you up here sooner or later. Yeah, he wasn't standing up anyway. All right. Regular agenda items, we will move into 1.1, preliminary analysis results for the initial draft transportation expenditure, TEP performances segments.
Matt Kelly with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. I'm here tonight to present results from the performance analysis. We did bring you some initial results from the transportation component of the performance analysis, and I'm going to give you a bit more information on that tonight. But the focus of this item tonight will be an economic analysis of the TEP as presented by and analyzed by the Bay Area Council's Economic Institute. But I'll start off with just some real quick results that we've been getting out of the model of late and wanted to share those with you. So we'll get that going. So before we brought you VMT results, vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas and delay results, this one, this time around, we're focusing a little more on how it affects the individual. So here's some, a look at some travel time savings on typical commutes around the county, looking at what we call the pleasant drive, the pleasant hill to Pleasanton commute. And we're comparing a typical trip by car and a typical trip by transit. So with the TEP, what you're seeing on the left is the time savings in percentage and then in parentheses, in minutes, and same with transit. So, and this also, I just want to note, includes the 226,000 new county residents that will be living here by year 2040, so a lot of new commuters and commuters from outside the region that Jeff will touch on in a few minutes. So in a car driver, this is a single occupant driver, on the pleasant commute would save five minutes. A transit rider will save 39 minutes over their current commute, which we think is a huge benefit, and that's due to the Innovation 680 investments that you all know about, the bus on shoulder, the ramp meters, the smart highway, all those variables that are components of that project. Brentwood to Walnut Creek, a auto driver would save 10 minutes. A transit rider, and that's due to the extension of the transit system from Antioch out to Brentwood, would save 25 minutes. And I think if you live out there and have to drive up to Antioch and find a parking space and this and that, that probably makes sense if you were able to just drive, you know, closer to home and get on BART in Brentwood. Danville to Concord, auto driver would save about eight minutes, but a transit rider would save 36 minutes. So even for the reverse commute, those transit investments on 680 are really helping out the average commuter. So here we looked at access to jobs, and we wanted to focus on communities of concern versus the rest of the county. So what this is telling you is each resident of various parts of the county, whether they're in a community of concern or not, has access to a certain number of jobs within a certain number of time. You get in your car, there's maybe, you know, 10,000 jobs you can get to within 30 minutes. On transit, maybe 7,000 jobs, that's just a random number thrown out. What this is showing is the increase in the number of jobs that one would have from a community of concern, from outside a community of concern, and from the county as a whole by auto and by transit. As you can see, we're increasing the number of jobs that an individual has by auto by, you know, 5% or under, depending on your location, but by transit, we're really bumping up that number within the communities of concern by over 40%, and on the county as a whole by 63%. Those three categories at the bottom are MTCs. They classify the communities of concern by the level of concern, basically, the, you know, the higher poverty, so forth, breaks it down. So we can see, even in the highest levels of community of concern, we're adding some very good benefits in terms of access to employment around the county. Jumping into transit by provider, we think, or the model is telling us that with the TEP, Westcat will see a 23% higher ridership than without the TEP, County Connection 44% higher, Tri Delta 22% higher, and BART 6%. The BART's a little lower just because it's on a much higher base. And then AC Transit, we're still trying to work that out. We've, we're trying to separate out the Contra Costa riders from the Alameda County riders because most of the routes cross the county line. So we're having, it's taking a little longer to separate the numbers out. So in terms of actual numbers of riders, with the TEP, we see 50,000 daily new riders, and that's not counting the AC Transit numbers, which we think would probably add a couple of, at least probably 20,000 riders to that, that, that total there. So really, the TEP does bump up transit ridership around the county and due to the heavy investment in new transit lines and increases in current frequencies. So now those new services. The Brentwood extension out to the new intermodal center would add almost 14,000 daily riders to the BART system. That new I-80, the new express bus services that are proposed for West County, really, those are new service, West County has a very robust current express bus ridership. All of that goes into San Francisco. This would provide new options for those riders coming down from Hercules, Pinole, and heading down into West Berkeley and Emeryville. There's a lot of job centers that are ride along I-80 but not currently served by express buses. So that would add over 1,000 new daily riders. And then the I-680 express bus services, currently, there is service in the corridor, but that's between Walnut Creek and Bishop Branch. This would expand that ridership area all the way up to Martinez and down to Dublin Pleasanton, including the Job Center at Bishop Branch, but connecting all points in between. And that would add over 6,600 daily new riders to that corridor. And that's, as I mentioned earlier, due to the investments in transit in the I-680 corridor as part of Innovate 680. So those are the numbers I wanted to present that we pulled out of our travel model. I can certainly answer any questions on those right now before I hand it over to the Bay Area Council.
Questions? Staff?
If I can do a quick one. Matt, would you go back to the one that shows Danville to the time saving of 33 minutes or 33%? I'm sorry. Saving eight minutes by car and 36 by transit? And I look at that and I go, actually, if you said San Ramon to Concord, it's the same thing, isn't it?
Sure, sure. It would probably add a percent or two.
I don't even think it adds a percent.
Or add a minute or two.
Something to address with the next speaker, if you would.
This was information. Next?
Okay, I'm going to get the next presentation ready, and I'll start by introducing Jeff Belisario. He's with the Bay Area Council. This, I'll let him explain how the Bay Area Economic, Bay Area Council Economic Institute is different than the actual council, but I'd like to introduce Jeff. They conducted this analysis, and we think it's pretty interesting data that you'll be interested to hear tonight. So I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Yeah, we've got the good graphics, we might as well use the whole screen here. So my name is Jeff Belisario. I lead the Bay Area Council Economic Institute. We're a regional think tank. We focus on anything and everything related to the regional economy, whether that's housing, transportation, workforce, water, and all things in between. And increasingly, we do economic impact studies. So in the past, we've looked at transportation expenditure plans in Alameda County, Santa Clara County, we've looked at RM3, we've looked at the high-speed rail extension between Gilroy and San Jose, and now we've analyzed here in Contra Costa County. I'll also point out that the Bay Area Council is our parent organization, but we are governed by a separate board that's made up of one-third business, one-third academia, and one-third elected officials. So while we do work with the Bay Area Council, we are technically a separate organization. So when we start these analyses, we always do kind of the current state of affairs. And I think the, you know, the issues that the entire region is dealing with is really a housing jobs balance. So we try to take a look at that here in Contra Costa County first. So this first slide just shows you probably what you know, where people live, right? Very much along the 680 corridor, the I-80 corridor, and on Highway 4. And I think the, the next slide here is instructive. So same circles, same graph, but this is really the job concentration of the county. So a couple of things to point out here. All those people that live in East County and West County don't necessarily have great opportunities to work close to home because the jobs here in Contra Costa are very much concentrated along that 680 corridor. And then two, you look at the jobs housing balance, and we talk about a lot of people commuting out of the county every day and using the county's transportation systems to do that. So we took a look at all that put together. So in-commutes, out-commutes, people coming through the county, making mega-regional commutes, another item that we've studied. We talk about 650,000 daily commuters using a piece of county infrastructure to get to work every day. It's a 20% increase in commuters from 2010. And then another key piece here in the county is that 43% of the residents, 43% of employed residents are commuting outside the county borders each day. When you look at kind of the five core Bay Area counties, that's the highest, a little bit higher than Alameda County, and a big increase as well from 2010. I would also point out here, just for comparison's sake, in that time, the population of the region grew by about 8%, and employment in the county grew by about 17%. So your, the usage of the system is growing faster than growth in the county or the region. And part of that, when we look at the mega-region, if you, if you squint, just write, Contra Costa County is exactly in the middle of this Northern California mega-region. And I think it's important to understand where the growth in those commuters is coming from. So part of it is an in-commute growing at 27%, part of it is an out-commute growing at 28% since 2010. If you look at the ends there, the biggest increases are coming from people that are coming from as far away as Sacramento, coming through the county to get the jobs in Silicon Valley, in San Francisco, in San Jose. So really, when we think about the county's transportation system and how it fits in with the regional economy, it, today, it serves as that out-commute, to a certain extent, it serves it with a circulized in-commute, with live and work, but it also is that middle spot where many, many people are going between places like Sacramento and Silicon Valley. And increasingly, we're talking about this mega-regional economy where more jobs might be in a place like Sacramento, especially as the Bay Area is kind of growing and bursting at the seams. So you look at that 6,800 number, that commute that's going south to north, and even that type of commute could be growing much, much higher into the future. So this is meant to just kind of place Contra Costa County in the regional context here and to show you that it's not just thinking about the county's residents, it's thinking about everyone using the system. So when we talk about how those people are using the system, we look very much at the mode share numbers. The county does have a high percentage of drive alone. When we look at the commuters, significantly higher than neighboring counties in the regional average. But this is an opportunity here, right? This is where we can see significant mode shift. Matt's already painted that picture of moving people from car to bus, from car to rail, and a lot of the, the TEP investments will do exactly that. So while we do show those numbers, we, we also point out in the analysis that Measure J has been successful in pushing people towards transit. The Richmond to San Francisco ferry service and the E-BART extension, both very, very popular. Actually, looking at the E-BART numbers for monthly ridership in the last month, if you take the two new stations combined, they've got the same ridership as North Berkeley, which is actually my station. So, you know, people come from San Francisco and they say this is way out there who's taking these. But when you look at the population growth numbers, you look at the usage, and you look at where the region is moving, it's moving east. And I, these, both of these investments have been very successful coming out of Measure J. So that's kind of a little bit of the background, and we highlight that within the report, and this is really a preview here. But really, the bulk of the work that we did was looking at the $3.6 billion that would be spent within the transportation expenditure plan and placing that into a model that allows us to think about economic impacts. So we do a couple of things here. One, we can cut the county up into the four regions and place dollars into those regions within certain corridors, and then we can say, what mode is that investment in? So the way the model works is we're taking that $3.6 billion of investments over 30 years, and we say, all right, what was the no-build scenario? Where does that take us in terms of time spent in traffic, greenhouse gas emissions, business productivity? We take the no-build scenario, we look at the build scenario, and that difference is the economic impact that we calculate. So just a couple more numbers. I don't want to harp on the potentially bad here, but vehicle hours of delay doubled since 2010. The average resident spends 13 days commuting, if you count up all the time in a car. It's a little bit higher than the average Californian. And you look at the transit ridership, significantly lower at a per capita basis than the rest of the Bay Area. But then you look at the transportation expenditure investments, and they definitely match up with those opportunities to kind of shift those numbers closer to regional averages. So the other thing that the, the transportation expenditure plan does, the other thing that we analyze is it, it's not just a solution for today, it's a solution for the future as well, and an economic solution for the future. So we talk about over a million people in the county by 2055, 400,000 jobs in the county by 2055, and really, a movement of jobs more than people. Now, just looking at this today, we see this already occurring with people moving out to Contra Costa County, moving to places that are further away from the job core, potentially in San Francisco and Silicon Valley. But in the future, those jobs can't all be there anymore. So this is even before the expenditure plan. You've got faster growth in jobs and population on a percentage basis. So then we look at the expenditure plan, we say, all right, what does this do for business output? What does this do for business revenues within the county? So we take that $3.6 billion, run it through our models, and it pops out $8.8 billion in business output. So these are not just the dollars being spent on concrete, this is not just the dollars being spent on wages. These are how those dollars then flow through the Contra Costa County economy and are recycled through. So if you pay a bus driver X dollars per hour, that bus driver is purchasing food within the county, that bus driver is potentially living within the county and paying rent, that bus driver is sending a family to school or getting healthcare within the county. So that $8.8 billion counts all of those transactions. The TEP will also produce 101, sorry, 1,656 full-time equivalent jobs over the 35 years. So the next slide will show what those jobs are in, but this is also an important jobs producers, just in terms of, A, the construction, but also how you think about economic development in the county and how businesses are able to access new parts of the county to locate their jobs. And then lastly, I don't want to add the 8.8 and 2.3 billion together, but there's 2.3 billions in cost savings out there as well. Much of this coming in the form of time savings. Time savings not just on commutes, but also for people that are in their cars or on transit for their job. You're talking about people like plumbers, people working in logistics that are driving a truck. So big savings there. And then savings for households and operating costs, there are savings in safety costs, and then there are environmental benefits that we've quantified as well. So if you were, I hesitate to do this, but if you do the 8.8 and the 2.3, you're talking about $11 billion on a $3.6 billion investment in terms of the economic multiplier here. This one's a little bit tough to see, I'm going to focus on the, the one on the right here. So we have those 1,600 jobs over the 35 years. Many of those will be within the transportation sector. So these will be the people working in transit, the people that are operating buses, the people that are operating transit systems. There are also the truck drivers that will potentially bring materials to the site as you're making your construction investments. But there are also jobs in logistics and warehousing. As the county improves its transportation infrastructure, those types of jobs become more attractive. If you have better highway access, companies are more likely to locate those jobs here. But I will say that half of the jobs are in other sectors, right? Talking about professional and business services. As, as the county improves its transportation infrastructure, again, the county becomes more attractive for all types of jobs. So it's not just about construction, it's not just about transportation, it's about all sectors really potentially benefiting from this, and all geographies around the county. So we also look at specific corridors and specific geographies to kind of get a, a bit of a case study on how the TEP will impact specific corridors. So we look at transit, and we look at East County specifically, and already, more Contra Costa County residents are choosing transit. When you look back from 2017 to 2010, investments in the East County Transit Extension will allow greater use of transit in the county. On the 580 approach to the bridge, the numbers here are actually quite startling, the increase in vehicle hours of delay from 2010 to 2018, and this is just in one direction, the Contra Costa County side of the bridge. And the bottlenecks here, many invest, much investment within the TEP will go toward alleviating that bottleneck. And then on I-68, we talked a little bit about Innovate 680 and the Express Lane projects there. Again, big increases in vehicle hours of delay within this corridor, and the TEP does a lot to address that. So what our report does, when we look at these corridors, we also look at the Northern Waterfront, we look at the Byron Airport, and we run case studies on how transit investments and transportation investments in these corridors could adjust the calculus that businesses are making as they think about locating their jobs. So with that, I think that's all I have. Happy to take any questions or feedback.
Questions, comments?
First of all, it's a great report. Some of the numbers are startling, particularly on the delay hours. I don't think most of us ever want to focus on that, but just seeing them and writing there, those are pretty extraordinary. And to see that have occurred in such a short period of time. But I think this, along with what Matt presented, is really, really the best answers we could hope for, that we have a robust transit, strong plan with some transportation dollars in there. But I think this is the information we were after. And I appreciate it from an independent perspective and how you do the modeling, and I don't completely understand how you do it, but the fact is that you're independent and this is what you guys do. This, this is something that I think we can rely upon with great confidence and gives us a goal and, you know, and a real clear direction of why we're doing this and what we can expect to see the benefits. So I think you've confirmed, you know, ideas and concepts, but you put them to quantifiable means, and I think this is just great news. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the slide where that showed Santa Clara and 6,800, whatever? And I'm trying to figure out, as a layman, I look at this thing and I go, why would we even mention 6,800 plus 33%? Look at the other numbers, and then there's 6,800. What, what does this slide try to tell me? And then there's another slide after that that talks about, I think it's the one after that at the very right side, it talks about bike and PED, and this one, and it shows bike and PED, and we're going up 1.9%. Just for me, when this is over, would you go back and analyze if that number changes? If San Ramon passes the specific plan for 4,500 and a 16-foot wide bridge there with a dedicated bike lane? If it does make a difference, it, part of the story that I'd like to tell also. Anyway, but what are you trying to say with the, I mean, why would you even put it in there versus the other numbers?
Well, this is the full picture. So it's, it's small, true, but growing. And I think one of the things that we see in the region, and this is just today, right? But one of the things we see in the region is the spread of population, and we're already pointing to an eventual spread of jobs.
Okay.
And I, it's true that that's a small number. There are not many people going from Santa Clara County to Yolo County today. But I think as we improve these transportation networks, it's important to keep in mind that this is a, there's a 20-county system going right now. It's not just nine, it's not one county.
Yeah.
It's not nine counties. There needs to be some semblance of planning across a bigger geography, and that, the TEP is not going to fix what happens in the region. Part of this is Bay Area Council Economic Institute studies the region, right? The, the important numbers for you are clearly the big ones, but I, I did want to point out that the numbers are growing at a pretty high rate in those through commutes.
I, I guess what I was looking, when I first looked at, I thought you were talking about Santa Cruz County. But to me, it probably would make more sense to be looking at what's coming from Solano and Sonoma versus the other ones that are in the in-commute, out-commute, whatever, because of what we're trying to do with 680. But I couldn't figure out why 6,800 was even in there, but, okay.
Well, we, I, within the report, we do focus a lot on the 52,800. I think that, that's, that's clearly the number. We're just trying to show the entire system here to get to the 650,000.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
I want to thank Jeff again, and note that there will be a full report available on this sometime next month, so you'll have access to all the graph, infographics and data from that.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into 1.2, Draft Transportation Expenditure Plan, review status.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Timothy Hale, Deputy Executive Director for Projects, and we made it. So tonight, I have a few agenda items to present, some administrative, but the, on the August 28th meeting, the Authority Board approved the draft transportation expenditure plan to be released to the cities and towns and the county board supervisors to seek their support, to the Authority Board to adopt the transportation expenditure plan in place, the expenditure plan on the ballot for March 3rd of 2020. And I'm happy to report that we were able to receive approval of all 19 cities, the county board of supervisors, which indicates a majority support as well as majority of the population, which then allows the Authority Board to consider the adoption of a transportation expenditure plan, adopted ordinance to impose a transaction and use tax, as well as a resolution to the county board of supervisors to call the election. So special thanks to Randy Wasaki, Don Tatzen, Hisham Nawami, and Lindsay Willis to really help and support. Really, we had to divide and conquer among staff to attend all 19 cities in the timeframe we were looking at. And, and during that same time, we actually received a number of support letters from our stakeholders urging the, the Authority Board to adopt the transportation expenditure plan. And that's something a little different than what happened in 2016, and I think the reason why is because with the Authority Board and with staff and, and all the stakeholders and everyone involved, we've been able to develop a, a really transformative transportation expenditure plan that really, really paves the way of the future for Contra Costa. And I would also say that we've already been receiving phone calls of how other counties, and even the region, could be actually using this expenditure plan as the model moving forward. So I think it's really exciting, I think we should all be proud. And, and if you allow me, I, I think it's really important to indicate and name each of the support letters that we received. So I'm looking to Chair, Chair Taylor, if you allow me to do that, I would.
Definitely, and, and we want this on the record because this is bragging rights for a lot of things.
So thank you, Chair Taylor. So just, we've got a number of them, so I'm going to go through them one by one. Assemblymember Jim Frazier, the Glaziers Architectural Metal and Glass Works Local Union 169, Carpet Linoleum Soft Tile Workers Local Union Number 12, East Bay Leadership Council, Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 302, Iron Workers Union Local 378, SPUR, International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 3, United Association Local 355 of Journeymen and Apprentices of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitting Industry, Transform, Bike East Bay, Save the Bay, Monument Impact 350 East Bay, Contra Costa Citizens Climate Lobby, Sunflower Alliance, Sustainable Rossmore, Contra Costa Move On. Rossmore, Contra Costa Move On, Indivisible Ree Sisters Walnut Creek, Arinda Progressive Action Alliance, and there are also a few that we are still expecting soon as well. So thank you for that, and I'm happy to take any questions.
So when you say there are some, who are we missing?
So we have Green Belt Alliance and Urban Habitat are the two that we're expecting soon.
All right. Any questions, comments? Director, you got a quizzed look?
Yeah, I promise I'm not going to do this on every one, but I want to personally thank Don for drawing the short straw and getting San Ramon and Dave Campbell. Because I, you know, we've made this pretty clear that Danville and San Ramon really have to step up in this election. And my councilmembers thought we were just voting to put this on the ballot. I said, no, you're not. Your job is to explain the advantages of this, and I think Dave went a long way to explaining some of the things that are coming, and Don did too. The point you made about going back to Sacramento so many times, they thought we were greedy, Don said, and that's a good thing. And the reality in that statement, I hope, sticks with, I know it has with one of my members, but with three other members. There's not going to be a third one. This is it. Get active and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Doesn't look like it. All right. Tim, are you done?
Yeah, that's an action to just receive the report.
Right?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any more discussion? We'll call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? There you go. 1.3, Approved Ordinance 19-02, Adopting 2020 Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Chair. Beginning in early 2019, we started this process altogether. The Authority has undertaken the actions necessary to consider placing a ballot or measure, an expenditure plan on the ballot in March of 2020, which would establish a new one, one, one-half of one cent sales tax in Contra Costa County for the transportation purposes. Placing a new transportation tax on the ballot, as I said, requires the majority of the population, approvals from the cities and towns representing the majority of the population, the majority of the cities, as well as the county board supervisors. So the Authority approved the final language of the TEP in August 28th, and we have received approval from all 19 cities and the board supervisors. And the proposed transportation expenditure plan would be, if approved by the voters, would generate $3.068 billion over the next 35 years, and that would start July 1st of 2020 and then in June 30th of 2055. And so staff has worked with Authority Legal Council to develop the attached ordinance 1902 as consideration for the Authority Board to adopt the TEP. And that, in that resolution or in that ordinance, there's essentially two, two major aspects to it. One is the, it has the adopted transportation expenditure plan, which is actually in front of you. It's a clean, bound copy, which is the final, final adopted transportation expenditure plan. And then the other aspect is that the Regional Transportation Planning Committee has requested that the Authority Board adopt the subregional summary, which, and that is the table that we all saw with the funding categories and the subregions, west, central, south, southwest, and east. And so we are, we are adopting that table as part of Exhibit 2 of the ordinance. And the reason why is that if we ever want to make a change, we would have to do an amendment of this ordinance in order to make a revision to that table. And then going on, there's also requirements and procedures to make amendments to the ordinance if we were ever to make a change or revisions to the transportation expenditure plan. So if the change is $50 million or less, then it would require a 45-day public review period. If it's $50 million or greater, they would have a number of steps that would require public, public meetings with the Authority, longer review periods such as 90 days, and making sure that everyone, we actually build consensus in terms of amendment that's $50 million or greater. So those are some of the summary of what's in the ordinance. And so staff seeks Authority Board to adopt ordinance 1902, which will approve the 2020 Transportation Expenditure Plan pursuant to finding that the adoption of the ordinance is not a project or alternatively exempt from the environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970. And that concludes my report.
I have a first?
Second.
I have a second, but before we call for the vote, we do have a public comment. Ryan?
I figured the next three are all connected, so I wasn't sure exactly where to come in. So here we are. Good evening, Commissioners. Ryan Lau, External Affairs Representative for MACI Transit. Just wanted to offer our thanks and appreciation for all your efforts on the part of the board and staff to put together such a thoughtful and forward-looking transportation expenditure plan. Given the timeline afforded, the Authority has been quite receptive to stakeholder input. And we also feel like the Authority has been quite willing to embrace the idea that the Contra Costa community is willing to look at alternatives to the private auto. And we really appreciate the Authority making transit a priority as one of those alternatives. As a result, we didn't provide a letter of support, but we actually had our Board of Directors approve a resolution in support of the Transportation Expenditure Plan, and Tim was so gracious to speak to that at our board meeting. That was just last Wednesday. Altogether, this TEP represents a real stand against congestion and climate change in Contra Costa County, and we look forward to working with CCTA to demonstrate the TEP's value proposition to the voters.
Thank you, sir. Did anyone else wish to address us from the public? From the public? Got it. All right. Noel, I have a first and I have a second, and now we're in discussion.
This is a great road that we've come to, and I have to tell you, I'm really proud, and I know everybody else sitting here, what we've done this time compared to what we've done in Measure X. I think Measure X taught us some lessons, told us some things that we wanted to do. We've refined that. But when you see this, and by the way, who's the actual author? Who's the one that wrote the words? Is it mostly Lindsay?
It was really a team effort, and our consultant, Convey, was really helpful in terms of writing the expenditure.
Somebody's done a good job to get it to flow and have the vocabulary all seem consistent. But more importantly, you know what this is? And I know we feel proud of this. It really is, it has written down all the things we talk about, really a lot since Randy came on board, is about that we're a visionary organization, we're going to do transportation planning differently. And we've talked about it for a long time, but actually it's here. It actually is written with a, with a lot of sense of pride and clarity of where we're going, how we're going to accomplish things. And for all the other reasons, absolutely, we should be supporting this. But I hope whoever Commissioners are sitting here in the future when they read this and when this passes, because this is the guideline, as you've talked about the changes and that, you know, this, it's pretty well laid out, and we're not going to be changing it easily, that this really talks about all those inspirations and the outcomes. And I just think, as we see this in our website, we look at our mission purpose, I think that ought to be kind of updated to align with this. It's a good mission, but when you read it, it's a little bit in the past. This is our future. And to Bike East Bay, Transform, everybody that's been involved in this, we are better off now in, in planning the future for the next 35 years than I think we were 10 months ago. I really think. I think we have coalesced with a clear vision of who we are and what we want to accomplish. So well done, and to everybody that put pen to paper on this.
So you're happy with this, Noel? Really. I gathered that. Just, just thought I want to make it clear to everybody, Noel is very, very happy. With that being said, we call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Enthusiastically. Did you hear that? 1.4, Approved Ordinance 1903, Empoysing Transaction and Use Tax, Administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Admin.
So I just want to have a special, special thank you to the Chair, Chair Taylor, for kind of keeping us online through this entire process. The Authority, the Commissioners, and really making this happen and adopting this transportation expenditure plan. I think it would, we would be remiss if we didn't have a couple shout-outs to a few folks. Randy, Executive, Randy Wasaki, our Executive Director, really with the vision, and then obviously with the CCTA staff, there's been a number of us, as I mentioned earlier, there's a number of us that have been involved with this development of the expenditure plan. And also our consultants. I mentioned Convey, they had a heavy hand in the graphics, the writing in the expenditure plan, as well as Advanced Mobility Group. And Kittleson did all the traffic modeling and performance, as well as Berry Council Economic Institute performed the economics. And then our, one of our favorite consultants, Don Tatson. And so without Don, I don't know where we would be. He's been a great leader. He's been, he's been a great leader in all of this, a great mentor, has spent countless efforts, and I just want to extend a huge gratitude and appreciation to Don and really getting this expenditure plan to where it is today.
So would you entertain a motion?
I haven't even done my staff report yet.
Well, that's how news we are.
So the, the Authority has now adopted the Transportation Expenditure Plan, and now we're moving into adopting the actual transaction and use tax ordinance, which is required by the Public Utility Code. And so we have been working with the Authority's legal counsel on the development of this, and I'm going to kind of hand this off to Moll, just to provide a quick comment and overview of the ordinance.
This is the ordinance you've seen at a couple of meetings. We worked with the Department of Tax and Fee Administration. They approved the ordinance, and we're looking for your approval by a two-thirds vote and finding it also exempt from CEQA. So it will actually impose the transaction and use tax.
Saying the use, oh, two-thirds vote, we need a roll call?
You don't need a roll call.
Okay, so if we, unless.
Unless you desire.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Tim, you're done?
Okay, so staff sees Authority Board approval to adopt an ordinance 1903 by two-thirds vote to impose a transaction and use tax if approved by two-thirds of the qualified voters in the March 2020 special election pursuant to a finding that the adoption of the ordinance is not a project or alternatively is exempt from the environmental review of the California Environmental Quality Act. And I will leave it up to our clerk, board, clerk board to, board of clerk, clerk of the board for the vote.
Okay. Looks like we have a, we already have a first.
We already have a second. The second came first.
And remember, Director Pierce has just gotten in, and she wants to vote on this. So if we could.
Oh.
Just in time. She was in on a flight. She told us at our ACOG meeting, she just landed at 5:30 and wanted us to.
Perfect timing, Julie, we're waiting for her.
We're waiting for your vote.
I brought your suitcase with you.
I just got off the train.
So we're going to call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Perfect. Opposed?
Who's anything?
By the way, unanimously, for the record. All right. Then we keep going. 1.5, Approval to Request, the Contra Costa, I know who'd better make a first on this, Board of Supervisors to Call and Consolidate a Special Election.
I'm going to give the honor to Supervisor Glover since he sits on MTC and is our super member here on this board.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a first, I have a second. He was finished. Oh, we have speaker cards. Oh, okay. Two speaker cards.
Too fast.
Yeah, well, I didn't know they were there. First person is Haley, followed by Mr. Campbell.
Good evening. Haley Courier, Policy Advocacy Manager, TRANSFORM. We were feeling left out that you all are having a party and congratulating each other, and we didn't get to say something. So we just wanted to, I wanted to offer my support and excitement about the Transportation Expenditure Plan and my gratitude, especially for the staff and for all of you for really making this a measure that we're excited to get behind and participate in, in the campaign. And we're also, of course, looking forward to the implementation once it gets passed and transforming transportation in the county. So thank you so much. Looking forward to continuing the work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Campbell, Bike East Bay. I too want to thank the entire board and staff and super volunteer, Don, and all the groups we've worked with. I do remember our contentious meeting back in early August, mid-August, it didn't go so well. And so I am slightly surprised a couple of months later we are here in unison to move forward. It's been a pleasure getting us and being a part of that process to get us to this point. I am too very proud of this plan. There's a lot of good stuff in here, and I don't mind sharing this with Alameda County every, Alameda County CTC every chance I get. And I'm actually going up to Sacramento with TRANSFORM in a couple of weeks. They're looking to put a measure on the ballot for November, and they called us, like, hey, we hear about what y'all are doing in Contra Costa County, we want to learn from your experience. And so we're ready to go up there and share a lot of this with them and share this plan with them. And I am super enthusiastic, starting in January, to get out on the campaign trail, to talk to voters about this plan. And I want everyone in this room who supports the plan to give me their personal telephone number, personal email, and let's get you signed up on the volunteer list so you can help us talk to the voters. Here's my list. Come see me tonight, I'll be hanging out, and I'll be coming to a lot of your meetings and your council meetings over the next three or four months to give you every opportunity you can to volunteer and help pass this. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. You made the first? Yes. Let's do it again.
So I would move.
Second, first?
I would move the item.
Second?
We have that reread.
I have a first and I have a second.
And under question prior to the vote, let me just say that this has been a great process, one that did start off contentious, but I think that because of the process and the leadership that's been provided in it, it opened the door for opportunities for all advocacy groups, I won't say special interests, but advocacy groups that are looking for good mobility movement here within Contra Costa County in a way that is going to put us on the map for doing things the right way. So I'm very thankful for everyone that's been involved in this process, the staff and under the leadership of Randy, and those folks that have worked very hard, Don, and Tim for, for your efforts, and all the other staff members. But even more importantly, to be able to get out to our constituency and to get buy-in from them that brought our advocacy groups all together, and which I know is going to be a great success in passing this measure. So let me just say that this is the appetizer. We got some work to do in order to get to the meal. So thank you once again. I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make this a success.
So I have a first and I have a second. Call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Works cut out, I think. Correspondents, Communications, probably in your packet. Director, you want to say anything?
I can if you want me to.
Sure.
So we, Lindsay and I went to Sacramento to SAECOG. They had an innovation workshop today, and they were talking about bright, shiny objects and testing self-driving vehicles and, you know, Salita Reynolds, the general manager from Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, she talked about some of the innovations that they're doing. And, and our response was, we're not always just innovative in testing the first and last mile solution. If you take a look at the TEP, there's a lot of innovation in the TEP. So VMT mitigation program, there's, there's some other, other things in that TEP that's, you know, performance-based, greenhouse gas reduction. And so I think that we talked a little bit about that, so hopefully that sets the stage for your meeting when you go, go to SAECOG. And then Deputy Secretary was sitting next to me, Lori Pepper, who we have known because she used to work for Honda. Now she's the Deputy Secretary of Innovation for the California, the Secretary's Office. And so I said, you know, by the way, you want innovation? We're trying to put buses on shoulder. Twelve, 15 years ago, we authorized that when I was in the Director's Office in San Diego, and 15 years later, we still can't get an approval to put buses on shoulders. So Deputy Secretary, that's an innovation. So they were giving me a bad time for just coming for that, that point, but that wasn't true. But if you think about this, and this measure passes, how it will integrate into a future mega-measure or things that are occurring in the future, because I think it sets the stage for an investment program. And if you think about, if they do pass $100 billion initially, and it's transit-related, that's your mitigation, that's your, that's your VMT mitigation. And this dovetails very well into that. We were, we were. We were, we were talking about that with Senate Transportation Committee Consultant on the way home from Sacramento today. And so I think, I think if you look into the future, it works very, very well. It fits very well together if we do it right. And so I just wanted to add that because we had that conversation earlier today.
Thank you, sir. And I did get, get a request, I need board, Julie wants to make a, a statement.
Just real quickly, first, I apologize for being late, but I was at a National Association of Regional Council's meeting in Phoenix, actually Scottsdale. And while we were there, we got to have a tour of their brand-new, well, 10 years old technically, but still expanding metro station, where they have their light rail and street cars and all of that. And, and they were also telling us about how innovative they were and that they had, they actually had a Waymo car out in front. But they're putting Waymo cars as shuttles on the public streets, which is rather interesting. But they were telling us that they were so far ahead of anybody else in the country, and I thought, hmm, you may be working with Waymo, but you're not working with all the rest that we are. I only quietly told them that afterwards. But, so it was, it was a very interesting trip. But, and if you're surprised, I, I knew ahead of time I was voting in favor of all of this. So I wanted to say thank you to our stakeholders. We did have a contentious meeting where a lot of people thought we were just going to automatically approve it. But you know what? In August, it still needed work. And because we work together, all of us, we have a far better plan that I think all of us can embrace and go forward and support. So thank you for your patience. Thank you, staff, for your incredible hard work, Tim and Lindsey and Randy and everybody else that has just put all their regular work aside and has, has knuckled down and found a way to make this work. Thank you to all of you.
So are you enthused too?
Am I enthused? You bet.
There we go. Okay, adjournment to the next regular council meeting, our regular meeting on November 20th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah. Woo-hoo.
Can I make?